Mr. Faust, can you attest that we have a formal [inaudible]? For the record, let it be known that Dr. Proctor is absent of this meeting. Counsel, you have an agenda before you that was distributed. Yield the floor for a motion.
The motion is approved. The agenda has just distributed.
Okay. Motion taken. Any discussion, counsel? All in favor? I would say, thank you, counsel. First item is the retirement amendment restatement. You'll have the information before you. Counsel, this is the modification of the defined jackets package that we had discussed for employment in regards to the conversation around homeboarding a new city manager. This is a requirement through some IRS standards that take place every three years to remain in compliance, and this revolves around age, years of service, but tax qualified status for members and for hybrid plans. They've asked that participating employers read up their plans using these recent approved adoption agreements, and that has been shared with you previously. And so that is for information. That will be on the agenda after the next meeting for an official move. Next item up, I have Ms. Mary Burgess, third-party inspections ordinance.
So what I understand, you guys had this in 2019 prior, and then we started talking about it at the Development and Infrastructure Committee. So the third-party inspections ordinance is basically so the third, we as a city know that these third-party inspectors that are going in after our staff and approving things on reinspection are actually certified to do so and are covered under insurance as well. So the biggest thing we have, and it's come up a couple of times lately, is, you know, they'll fail something with 26 things missing, and then poof, the next day, we have a third-party engineer stamped letter saying that everything's been fixed. So whether that happens or not, I'm not saying that there's improprieties, but there have been some reports of some unqualified people's, some people working that aren't the actual inspector who are out there inspecting and somebody else's stamping and so forth. So this lays out, the ordinance lays out what is required in order to become an inspector. We also have all the forms that you need to fill out. We've got those in place. There's also a fee you have to do re-up annually, and you have to prove your recertifications and anything like that, so you have to keep up on all of that. There's also penalties for if you pass something that does not meet our code, and also suspensions, anything that is done that is improper. There is one thing in here that I did want to adjust. It's on page 11. I think it's. It's under section 18454, Procedures for Conducting Third-Party Inspections. It's number four. We do not allow third-party inspectors to do finals, because that would require them to sign our certificate of occupancy. And so that would be the only thing that I would remove, or change the language to say final inspections are not included in this. So that way, we do have the final say, because as far as building permits go, if we come into something, and even if our inspector missed it the first time, if he sees it, the permit's still open, it is still something we can come back to. So as long as the building permit is still open, it is something that is still actionable. So, you know, we had some instances with firewalls that it may have been missed by the first inspector, but it was caught by the second inspector, and it is still enforceable. So that is it.
So unless it's something hidden, the protection is that we still do the final inspection?
Correct, correct. And I feel that that's something that, you know, because we issued a CO, and even though there may be some, you know, we have the stamped affidavits and everything that these third-party inspectors provide us, I feel that, you know, we are paying a building inspector, and our building inspector is qualified and to do all of these, so I think it's appropriate for them to do the final inspection. I don't understand third-party inspectors, because when you pay your building fee, your building permit fee, you are paying for our building inspector to come out. Our reinspection fee is $50. Sometimes it has been changed to be higher when they call us out, and there is 26 items, and it takes our inspector six hours to do that inspection. And I say, it will be $150 if more than three of these are outstanding still, because then you're just wasting all of our time. So, but again, you know, they pay for our building inspector to come out. So third-party inspections, they're paying more for that person to come out, more than the re-inspection fee as well. Our reinspection fee is $50. So these guys make $100 bucks an hour with like a one-hour minimum. If they want to use a third party, we also, I'm not sure if you guys know this, if you call in by four, the day before, we are open the next day. So that's with our inspector and also our third-party inspector that we use right now as well.
To ensure quality build, keep staff from being cut up on multiple re-inspections, finals will still be done by City of Jasper. Counsel, any additional information needed from staff?
You said you had, I'm sorry. You said you have forums and everything, and I'm not showing you.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we are ready to roll this out. We think it's important.
So different.
Yep. Yeah, so we will be vetting them totally, making sure everybody signs off, and making sure everybody's certified through the state as well.
Fantastic. Any objection for consent agenda, counsel?
I, I'm not sure. Is there a reason to have open discussion on?
It's gonna be the same presentation?
I hear none. I see much good one. Consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is water conservation efforts. Mr. Andrew Collins, utility.
So what you have is a proposal to strengthen our conservation efforts for our outdoor watering. The state of Georgia has one of these already in place, but this is just more stringent than what the state of Georgia is. And given our concerns with infrastructure supply and demand of the water supply, I feel that we should strengthen our conservation efforts. Right now, the state of Georgia, 24% of Georgia is under drought conditions as of today, and 94% of the state is under abnormally dry conditions. You'll see in what I presented, the state right now is allowing watering six days a week. But this proposal was to only allow four days a week, no watering on Wednesdays, Saturdays, or Sundays. The state of Georgia also says no watering between 4:00 p.m. and 10:00 a.m. 4:00 p.m. is actually our peak usage, so our recommendation was to allow watering from 7:00 p.m. until 5:00 a.m. on designated days. Even numbered addresses would water on Mondays and Thursdays, and odd numbers would be Tuesdays and Fridays. It would be recommended that your pool is reduced to 25%, or reduced by 25%. And then, of course, fountains, you have to replenish that as it evaporates. So, and then also, you know, if they have property leaks. But given that also, we're going to instruct city staff that if we do find water leaks, we repair those immediately, no longer waiting till the next day. Because if we're going to try to push a conservation effort onto the residents and the businesses, we should also do the same as city staff. To enforce this, you know, we'd have to have some type of enforcement. This is just a proposed penalty violation. Of course, the first one would just be a warning. Second one would be a $50 fine. A third would be a $150 fine. And a fourth violation would be $250 interruption of water service. This is not to interfere with customers or anything when it comes to what they're trying to do, the resident. It's trying to protect our supply and our infrastructure. Currently, we are running our plant almost at mass capacity because of demand. So with outdoor watering, if we could reduce that, it would help us with that, and also help with the entire drought condition that could be coming if we don't get a lot more rain. And right now, we do fall in that 94% that is in abnormally dry conditions. So this is a little more stringent than the state guidelines that are currently on our website. And like any state thing, you have to abide to it, but we can make it more stringent than the state guidelines.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, is there additional information needed between now and our meeting?
I noticed this is reduced pool levels by 25%. Does this mean we have to drain the pools?
No, sir. It just, instead of filling them as they evaporate, just try to reduce that refill by 25%. So you wouldn't be refilling it as often.
And Ms. Mayor, I would ask.
Yes, sir.
Andrew, have we, have we reached out or had any conversations with any of our partner or state?
Pickens County, I spoke with Phil Adine, utility director in Pickens County. They are on board to do the same, since a lot of our service area is in Pickens County. I reached out to them to see if they would adopt the same thing, and they are willing to. They're currently reviewing what I proposed to you. Theirs may be a little bit different, but they are going to be on the same page with us.
Thanks, sir.
And how would this cover businesses like painters or pressure washers that are doing work out in the community? Would they have to just schedule work on Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, Friday?
Businesses that use water won't be affected if that is their common use. Pressure washing business, that kind of thing, they would, we can't restrict that. We can't, and we can't affect their bottom line or their day-to-day livelihood. We would ask those businesses to try not to waste as much, but those we really can't control. We can't impede on their business. Car washes, they have recycle systems, so they do use a little more than, they replenish just the same. So, but they won't, we really can't impede on those. We just ask that instead of washing your car at home two or three times a week, that you utilize the carwash that uses the recirculations.
Thank you, sir. From my viewpoint, the only thing I would ask, I'm going to prepare this for the next council meeting. Counsel, I do not believe this is a consent agenda. I don't believe this needs to be talked about.
I agree.
Public needs to be educated.
Yes.
If staff could prepare visual aids to assist this education component for our citizens.
Good idea.
Anything else, counsel?
I don't know if you saw on the news this morning, but there's a couple of counties down in South Atlanta that are already doing this.
Also, there might be questions about gardens.
Yes.
This does not, and the state law does not affect personal gardens agriculture. So if that question does arise, it does not affect somebody for the personal garden.
Those are good.
We just recommend that they water that in this timeframe, but we, they're excluded from the four or five day a week, so.
So I'll work with Andrew to come up with some visual aid.
Sure.
Things that we can be advertising if this should happen.
Thank you. And or that could be if our billing system allows us to add that more and add it on the bill. Thank you.
I assume we could put it on Facebook.
Absolutely.
Laura?
Thank you, counsel.
Next item is city manager office update. Court item is [inaudible]. Mr. Douglas, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and I appreciate you allowing us to do this, this format. I do think that some of the items that we're going to kind of talk about specifically mid-year budget amendments, it's probably better for us to just kind of sit here and point and help and guide through. So not a whole lot of information on the alcohol moratorium, other than I believe this is proposed earlier in here in January. Speaking with Ms. Goldner, she had advised me that, in a consult with Mr. Seif and our legal, that I think July of 8th was the point in time that the moratorium was to expire. I would like the opportunity to have a conversation with our stakeholders in downtown who currently have a medical license. This is going on, I think, seven or eight weeks since I've been back, so I'm getting around to hopefully starting to get back in the swing of things, and we'd just like the opportunity to meet with them, talk with them, kind of review some of the things we're doing, what could be done differently, what needs to stay the same. And I think extending the moratorium would at least afford me the chance to, if there's some sort of recommendation out of our office on modifying it, at least before the South Command do so. If not, you know, we could come forward with recommendation of lifting the staff level. So even if on July 8th, you all wanted to extend it 60 days, 90 days, I believe, based on my understanding, it could always be lifted sooner if, if we think necessary.
Thank you.
So the third-party inspections ordinance, Ms. Burgess was very kind, and not throwing me under the bus, but I was actually the person who was sitting in the chair in 2020, in January of 2020, when the third-party inspection ordinance was literally in the folder for preparation for y'all approval. And when I, when the question came up about Mr. Seif and Mary were talking about, was this ever codified? I went back through some old file folders and noticed that it was in the folder, but it never made it to the final. So it made me think about some other things that perhaps had slipped through that was at the point in time important and necessary. So I don't know if Lori had a chance to print out, but you have kind of a very, I call it simple, elementary, whatever, code amendment, code ordinances, where the section 78 is already in our code ordinances dealing with streets. I received a lot of queries when I was here the first time of why we do not have certain local thoroughmatters and streets designated with no through truck traffic and/or the prohibition of engine braking or, you know, whatever you want to call it. But basically, why we had not done it. There are other communities that had. I don't think we really had an issue with imposing it. I think it was just a matter of bringing it to light to say, this is how you would do it. You essentially would consider amending, when I say amending, essentially adding a section, and this one being proposed, of route of travel through trucks. And this was kind of extracted from another community, some of the language that it's just any truck or truck, tractor operating separately or in combination with any trailer or semi-trailer with either two axles with six tires or three or more axles should be designated in the purpose of this section of the small truck. No such structure would be operated on these street or portion of the street where signs are posted, preventing the trucks. Signs may be posted to prevent the trucks from operation on single street or broken streets, so as to from our closed areas. And obviously, the next section would be a restriction of, not restriction, but an exemption of sorts for state routes designated US Highway 515. So obviously, we have State Route 53, so those would be exempt. Mostly neighborhoods, things that otherwise may have a different route that a truck could take, but the most convenient route would be a local street. And there are situations where if they turned around, or turned left, or turned right to avoid a particular local street, it just helps us in our continued efforts to keep our roads maintained, and state routes are maintained by GDOT so they can hold that. So what I would, and Chief Sheriff, as I have spoken, and we put a restriction or exemption in for public safety, the fire apparatus, since it would technically apply to literal interpretation of the access. In the past, I'm accustomed to when you do an ordinance such as this, and you say, okay, well, the map is way too confusing, so you list out streets. That's really what you do, because from an enforcement standpoint, even from a speed enforcement or other enforcement, or, you know, from police, you can just go to the sections for ordinances, and here are the streets that are marked. So whether a sign has been illegally taken down, it doesn't, you know, prevent the opportunity for some education and compliance to report safety. So that's that. Wanted to bring to y'all's attention, I thought it was probably something good back then, just to get through and candidly, as we continue this journey, I hope that if there are other things that we bring to light that we talked about that maybe didn't have a whole lot of contention, but needed to be brought back, but it wasn't, I hope y'all entertain us to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Brandon, is there a way first contact? Type ways and Google Maps, a lot of love, because so many of these trucks are using GPSs and the telephones to go around now, and that's caused issues.
Yes, sir. I do know that there are some, some, I, so we don't have a GIS manager here, but what I would normally do is have our GIS manager, there's a whole database that they can upload all the new stuff to, and they populate it on theirs, the hour limits and all that. So we'll look into finding out what's our best course of action locally here.
You can actually, on, for like Google and stuff, you just.
Yes, sir. Okay. Which is maybe what she did. I don't know.
Anything else, counsel? Thank you, sir. I have a seat.
I should do that. Thank you. Tell you what, let's take it away on C. So you all approved last meeting, the annexation of rezoning. So just to dot our i's across our t's, and we've confirmed with Mr. Seif and our legal representation that it's still valid because the approval was such that annexation, rezoning of the 490 Liberty Lane. However, we did not designate a particular 2024-14 ordinance with it, so we would want to put that on y'all's agenda. Mr. Seif suggested consent agenda, but I wanted us to bring it up after the work session, just so you're not confused, the lights on there. It is approved, it is valid, but from a record keeping perspective, it allows us to source back instead of just for one, the ten item motion, and you'll see the designated ordinance for the, one of the other annexation, but you'll then have dashboard.
We're trying to.
Two later, sir.
Is that going on consent agenda?
I am D.
Kick it over to Chief Sheriff. waiver of release.
Waiver of release. We had some interest when we were at the, at Pickens County High School for the year day, which were some of the 18-year-olds would do ride-alongs, our apparatus, and kind of see what the day in the life for our services. So we partnered with Mr. Seif, and he developed a waiver for us. We've now got that waiver, so our next step is to develop a policy for that. Minimum age would be 18 years old, and you've got to be a little incentive for a ride-along for us, and then we would be able to do ride-alongs. Obviously, it would just be during the daytime, we would conclude probably 9:00 p.m. That's when we have it to where everybody's got to be out of the station, if not all duty personnel or staff.
And just to add to it, this was, this was an item that no actions needed, but in the spirit of kind of using this work session as a means of saying, you know, here's some things that may be unique or different that we have or haven't done or modified, and so we just want to bring to y'all's attention for that why. Pardon? Yes.
The other thing we got finished today is we're hitting in the short rows as far as our UMS licensing. That should be completed November of July with a split line on August 1st. We'll make an official announcement in August, but we just completed our pharmacy agreement and a lot of our DPH paperwork, living space, and coming on 3rd.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, counsel, I know I'm driving y'all and Lori crazy a little bit, because I will say that my original first meeting here, I was going to just say city manager office update, and that was it. And Ms. Lori told me that I needed to itemize a few things. So there are some things that I want to talk to before I get to E, if you'll entertain Mr. Mayor, just in the spirit of information sharing. And we may still put it on the July 8th meeting as kind of a ratification of some action we're going to do, just again, from a record keeping perspective. But you'll know that Pioneer Road is kind of moving forward successfully. There is a change order that has been found to be necessary due to, I think, some, some engineering oversight, I think in the amount of 35,000. So that is a change order that was within the authority of Nissan with, you know, some assistance with elected, but didn't want to just do it without y'all knowing that it needed to be done, and we'll have more details in the packet in terms of the ratification of it, but we will be moving forward with getting that done. Additionally, we're working to, we've got a stormwater pipe that at Veterans Park that we've been working with the team and Mr. Frank on getting relocated. We're kind of in a position of, we've identified kind of the funding source that really is very good timing, and I think that we can outsource and have that pipe moved in partnership with the veterans to have it so they can move their second phase. I think we had gotten a verbal, and I think Andrew was waiting for the written, so we'll probably have some more info on the July 8th in terms of kind of, once again, it's going to be very nominal cost, but it is our infrastructure subsurface, so I do think that it is appropriate for us to relocate. Not that it would necessarily be a have-to type thing, but if you ask me, you have to, because if something ever happens, I don't want the work that they do to be damaged because we didn't have the foresight to move it before it was installed. So Mary and her team caught that early on. Kim and I met with Mr. Frank and kind of articulated, we're going to kind of bring it up to y'all, get a plan together, and then by the 8th, have a decision on, you know, getting them released to move forward their phase two project. Mr. Val.
They are going to remove that pipe, right?
I, I strongly said, if you're there, remove it. Don't put any sort of field, although we don't want any pockets, so just to remove it, and then when they grade it out, there's nothing there to do.
Yes, but I originally, the reason why, and I know that Frank's been going around town saying that, you know, the big pipe is my fault, and it is, it is my fault, because I don't want it running under the veterans because of the probability of there being some sort of installation error, and I don't want to see that, you know, have that gorgeous veterans memorial sink into the ground. So, yes, that is me, but I also want them to remove the pipe just for that same exact reason.
Yes.
Because if we don't know what kind of shape it's in, I don't want it, I'd rather have it on, everything on nice, compacted, stable ground in order to.
You can bet it would have to be right underneath.
Exactly. Exactly.
It doesn't work out.
And then, so I would love to prevent that, because, you know, it would be, well, Mary told us to. Mary said it was okay, so I want to just make sure and, you know, that it will be removed, and, you know, that is definitely the best course of action for that, because we all saw it happen at Speedburger, and that's all I can picture now with every single thing that I look at.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item, sir. Do you have another impromptu?
I think, I think I ran out of space in my notepad, so I think we're good on the impromptu, sir. I think Ms. Lori's going to hand out kind of a word document. See, the good thing is, sometimes I put things in Word that will reduce the amount of me talking to speed things up. And in speaking with many of you all, we wanted to have this work session in advance of our July 8th meeting, so then that way you all could have time to digest the general fund operating, enterprise fund operating, and just as a reminder, a general fund is what essentially provides us with general administrative services, police, fire, admin, development, and enterprise is your business fund waters, who are not sanitation. So you'll see that we are going to present to you all a spreadsheet at the July 8th meeting for consideration where you have a amended budget. So if you recall, late 2023, you approved a 2024 budget with preparation occurring last summer. So a year ago, a lot of assumptions made, assumptions of revenues that are going to come in based upon trends or historical or forecasting. So a mid-year budget amendment is then to allow some adjustments as you get. So a mid-year budget amendment is then to allow some adjustments, uh, as you get about six months into your fiscal year, in our case, calendar year, to just kind of say, hey, where are we at with how we're running with revenues, uh, expenditures, uh, where are we at in terms of our operating salaries, bennies, benefits? So you'll see that it looks like we're going to be probably wanting to reduce down the, the property tax by about $180,000, based upon the fact that we've essentially already collected, for the most part, what we're going to collect. So we had budgeted, I think, 1880, 1.88, and I think we're going to amend that down to about 1.7. Because I think all the collections pretty well come in, that's going to come in. So that's a, a reduction in the revenue that we would put before you all, along with, um, things that are related to, uh, building and development. Obviously, that's one of the more, um, line items that has a variableness to it because it's things that we don't necessarily control. However, when Mary and her team and, and Kim and Andrew, they're, they're talking to developers and property owners about moving forward projects, oftentimes you all are then presented with, hey, this is what we want to do. It does not require zoning, maybe it does, maybe it's a variance, maybe it doesn't. But hey, let's move forward and then sometimes it can be years, sometimes months. So in the case of developing the budget, you can say, okay, hey, this has been rezoned years in advance. They're now got their civils, uh, approved or almost approved, we need to budget accordingly. So we are looking at probably a, a reduction of 450,000 in our building permits, uh, based on the fact that some of it has not materialized. So once again, that's just something that, the reason we do mid-year budget amendments is to do a check and then look at. If in fact it, it has an uptick, uh, later on this year, then when we do our final budget amendment, uh, even after we've closed out, but prior to when the auditors, uh, kind of I call it month 13, uh, so to speak, you do a final amended budget to kind of true up. We do have, uh, some transfers from county court, uh, that we had not expected. So there's always, um, some monies that are designated to be transferred in from that to offset any sort of administrative costs, uh, relative to that fund. From an expenditure perspective, uh, we have had some professional legal, uh, fees increase, uh, just the nature of some of the work that we do does necessitate, uh, that professional legal advice. So those expenditures, uh, will need to be increased in the mid-year budget amendments. We have spoken with all the department leaders, um, about two weeks ago to essentially say, hey, let's just kind of keep a status quo. Meaning let's do a good job, don't go out and just spend, um, money wastefully, which they don't anyway. But it's just a reiteration of say, hey, uh, we're just going to hold steady in our departments. If it's something that's not vital for an operational need, it's more of a, a want versus a need, then maybe we just sit on it for a little bit. Sometimes I say no for now, not forever. So those are just practices that most jurisdictions do. I will tell you that, uh, in the spirit of keeping our existing talent that we have, um, that's our main goal when we start looking at operating budgets, whether it's general or enterprise, is keeping the talent we have. So we do have two open positions in our, our parks budget. And so we are recommending to eliminate those budget positions in the mid-year amendment, because that will help to offset some of the decrease in the revenue. Because ultimately, we had budgeted a use of fund balance, uh, beginning of the fiscal year. So we will need to use that along with potentially utilizing additional fund balance to balance the budget. So what we're trying to do is look at all the ways we can to reduce any of those expenditures. So because those are in field, and because I do think in talking with Andrew, as he's been on board a couple of months now, uh, he's identified a few key team members that can have a couple of hours a day that can help augment some of the services without having to hire me. And at any point in time, this is open, I don't want it to feel so formal, but Kim, Andrew, Lindsay, you all, anything you want to add, supplement, take away, I do want y'all to feel comfortable doing that. So another way to reduce the expenditures in the general fund is, you recall last meeting, we heard from our auditors where we did have a surplus. Now, what that means is revenues over expenditures from the last fiscal year. So I think it would be wise for us to create a capital improvement fund, which is a whole new budget number from the chart of accounts. I call it 350, uh, just because from a general fund, capital improvement fund. You have some seed money that's typically used when you have some surplus in general fund to say, we're going to segregate these monies, put it aside for capital, uh, projects to reinvest into some of our capital needs of general governmental expenditures. So you'll see that we want to remove of the operating budget, um, the vehicle that's needed for the development department. They're down a vehicle, they don't have one, so that had been budgeted. But clearly, what we'd like to do is move that into a capital improvement fund, we'll talk about a little later. And the idea of how to start that and to seed that money is to take the surplus monies from the 2023 end of fiscal year, move those surplus monies to a capital improvement fund, and then you can do some capital expenditures, uh, such as the truck and the platter, uh, that's needed. So, uh, like I said, those are just, we'll, we'll touch on that, uh, here in a moment, but, uh, that's how you can reduce some expenditure. Beyond that, we did not see a whole lot of other opportunities to remove, um, expenditures, because we do still have to operate, provide services to our constituents. So, you know, we're going to continue to discover the numbers. Part of the reason why I encourage Lindsay not to produce a spreadsheet for tonight and to hit the high level is it will change tomorrow. And by the time we get to July 8th, it will change five or six more times. And then on July the 9th, it will change again. So what we want to be able to do is give y'all the high points of saying, here's where we think we're going to be on July 8th. And then if we're trending the way that we think, no need to do anything different. If we think that we need to scale it back even more, and wait till the final amended, looks likely. Part of it is, there is a position that I think had been identified as, uh, pretty, pretty critical for the team in terms of community development position. Uh, I do believe that that was intentional of assisting with, uh, some of our downtown events and some general assistance with economic development efforts. So we have continued to have that position available, but we just have not even begun advertising. So that position, uh, there will be a cost savings in this fiscal year, because I believe it had been budgeted for 12 months. And if we get to August, September and fill it, then clearly we would have had several, eight months of savings, uh, but yet fill the position. And knowing that in our 2025 budget, we'll just have to re-budget for that, uh, position. So that's why we want to kind of keep that in there. So anything on general? Yeah, I kind of probably said a lot more words than the four bullet points on those papers, so. Chief Sher's kind of confused about that, he's kind of got excited himself with bullets.
Brandon Manson?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would like to add to the building permit line item on there. Just because we have not collected it at this point when we thought we would, we are going to collect it at some point in the future. There are some developments that Mary's group, that we have been working with, that site plans have just taken a little longer than what we had expected them to take. Construction has taken longer than what we expected it to take. They're still underway, they're still moving forward. It's just things that we had anticipated would be a little bit further along at this point, and that we would have collected some of those fees then. We have not, but they are still coming, and we will collect them at some point in the future.
Just expand on that, we do have the building permits for one particular development. It's just we are at a, um, point where we need to move some of the utilities through. And I like to do these things before they go vertical. So have everything in place first, so I expect that number to go down by about $300,000.
And just about the unusual by question amendments. The unusual thing is we'll look at it earlier this year than we have in the past.
Great.
Like that makes sense to you.
Let's just been slow.
All right, sir.
Yes, sir, so then moving on to the enterprise fund operating, uh, expenses, um, and this is our business. So in terms of our general governmental, um, you know, just for, uh, for refresher, again, general operating, police, fire, um, admin, finance, development. Enterprise is, um, pretty much Andrew right now. There's a, their own team these guy, but, uh, water sewer, um, is, is mainly what we're going to talk about, um, for this evening. I will say from a historical perspective, going back to when you develop the budget, um, when you develop the budget, we're still going to be on that first, that first page, second page, but y'all can hold that for this moment. The, the operating, um, I think when y'all are creating the 2024 budget, uh, there was obviously the need to visit, uh, water rates, in light of the fact that there is an expectation of making the payments for USDA, uh, debt service on the, uh, plant and some water improvements. So I think that had been set in motion that there are, you know, statutory requirements of doing some cost studies. And I do think that just in terms of when you have transition, uh, in local governments, uh, whether it's at elective level, whether it's at staff level, there are times that you'll have some, some gaps, some lapses. And so the recommended, uh, water rates, uh, to be essentially in fact January 1, had not taken place because it had not been formalized through you all during official action. So, uh, part of what we'll talk about momentarily is the water rates. But in terms of from an operating perspective, that does have an impact on the water receipts that we have not collected. All the while, some of the same expenses that, uh, we had to do to, to keep the business going, um, have to be carried out. So we're seeing a pretty significant reduction in the order receipts that even if we were to take action for effective August 1, September 1 date, uh, we're still in excess of, uh, six figures, uh, seven figures have been down, uh, one plus million. And that's just the reality, because I think that it had been quite some time that, uh, the rates have been looked at. And I think that was the impetus of USDA requiring city to go through a cost study, uh, to say, yes, you can service the debt on these needed improvements. However, in order to pay for, you need to have these adjusted rates. Meter sales have been down, but we're, we're thinking that's about 100,000, uh, same with AMI meter fee. And the sewage receipts, couple that with the water receipts, uh, down about 400,000, pounds about 100,000 down. The leachate, um, is down a couple hundred thousand. Part legal calls with the construction still going on at the plant, there's not been the ability for us to accept thereby reducing that. So once again, when you're sitting here talking about budgets for the next fiscal year, and, and we'll be talking about it in August, uh, for 2025, and then June, July of 2025, we'll be having a similar conversation of where we're at. And hopefully we'll be on target, uh, or even better. But right now, just from a timing perspective, uh, we do need to address some of these shortfalls. The, the same thing of the, uh, construction aid, um, married with building permits, you're going to see a reduction of that. But to, to Kim and Mary's point, our hope is that, um, when we have some key developments come on board, we'll collect that. And that will help reduce the, what we're projecting about 400 down, reduce that to almost getting close to, to par with that. From an expenses perspective, uh, we are suggesting to do something very similar to what we had proposed, um, with, um, the general in terms of creating the capital improvement fund. So what you're doing is basically when you're looking at your operating fund, whether general or enterprise, you essentially know that that's what it takes to operate the department to give the services. Your capital improvement fund is your capital items, your one-time purchases, or one-time big ticket items of doing something that you can capitalize. And then you have a depreciation thereafter. I do think, uh, Lindsay, um, I think we will be able to reduce some of our expenses relative to the loan payments for 2024. Since I think with USDA and GFO, uh, we may not have to start paying back because there's some things not completed, so therefore we won't have to pay. So we budgeted to, so we can kind of eliminate that expense thereby assisting with that. So even if we do have some, some construction stuff goes on, it helps your revenue. If we can reduce our expenses, segregating out the capital purchases or projects, and then some of the payments, that will go a long way of helping to, to bridge that divide. Same way with right now, we've not had any sort of transfers out, uh, from the water fund, uh, which is a, it's a normal practice, uh, in terms of augmenting your general services with your business, but, uh, we have not anticipated on doing that. So that, once again, is something that is available, uh, to this body, but I think for purposes of, of this budget, a mid-year budget amendments, we aren't necessarily going to reflect that. So any questions on that? And Miss, Miss Lori's already sent you the, the enterprise, uh, capital fund, so admittedly, today, Chief, Chief Lindsay, Lori, Kim, they've, they've experienced kind of sometimes the, it's not, it's not kind of impromptu, but sometimes it's just a work, so this is a work session. So the document that we just handed out to you, the enterprise fund capital fund, is not going to be what you would vote on, on July 8th. It's going to change. There are some things that, that when we kind of scrub the numbers, um, the numbers could go up or down. And we disclose that to y'all, but these work sessions is to kind of give you a heads up, vote the thinking to get back into budget mindings. And, and Andrew's here and he can chime in on, on some things and Kim, uh, but I think there had been an expectation of doing some generators for lift stations. So we want to continue to, to do that. Once again, the way that we would fund the enterprise fund, capital fund, is taking some revenue, uh, fund balance from that fund, putting over to create, um, and, and capital funds are perpetual, meaning that they go from year to year. You can still approve them with your fiscal year operating budget, but the idea is these capital projects sometimes lapse over fiscal years. So the perpetual funds are squashed and capital funds, they're pretty much down here until the, the governing body says, no, we haven't gotten to it, um, you know, it's no longer needed, which I don't see that ever happening in some regards. We do have a lot of things we need to do, uh, upgrade lift stations, put in about 250 for that. I believe there's, uh, sewer line rehab, they've been identified, tiny ridge that we think, Kim, Andrew, we can possibly utilize some of the GFO funds for that.
Yeah, it certainly falls underneath that rehabilitation project on the clean water project side. And so, you know, when we were developing projects last year based off of the things that had happened throughout the year and knowing we needed to do it, at that point, we were not talking about GFO funding. And really, it was kind of, well, this is what I think it's going to cost. We haven't truly evaluated. We haven't truly evaluated whether or not there is money available somewhere else, maybe through grants or anything like that. And now we have the GFO fund, so I believe this could be pulled and actually put into that.
Have we restocked the pumps that we had concerns with on heaven on the shelf?
Can you toward him with a point?
No, sir. We're actually in the process of doing that. In my short time, I needed to get more information. Kim got me that information this morning. So we will be, and I talked to Lindsay, we will be moving forward with getting those redundancies in place.
Thank you. And so when we had originally started this conversation, the the team was really good about saying, hey, we can we can do without. You you'll you'll hear the chiefs and them all that talk about how, you know, there's some giving. They'll not ask for everything, but I said, no, no, no. We want to we want to fund that.
Thank you, Mr. Say funding.
So so Andrew, Andrew had had kind of said, look, we could forego vehicle and sewer maintenance. And just candidly, being here some time ago, I remember that we were scrambling trying to to keep our fleet reflecting the professions that we are. So I do think that it's important for us that if we need sewer maintenance truck, Andrew had talked with a local vendor, and I think they had spec-ed out development truck and sewer maintenance truck where we could have several five, six, seven thousand dollar savings if we were to partner and purchase two. And I think that if we had originally said we needed it a year ago and it was good to be budgeted, I do think it's worth while to keep it. And Andrew, if you want to say no, or if you want to say you're indifferent, you know, you certainly can. But that was just my point of saying, let's keep it in.
Yes, please, can I get it too?
It would definitely be a cost saving to to purchase multiple. The cost of one was considerably more than purchasing two. So that's why we approached, we know development needed one. So we kind of tried to bargain with them a little bit to keep them at our budgeted amount. And they willingly agreed if we bought two, they could keep them at our budgeted price per department.
And 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 save the less than the forty-five. So I just put that in there just in case. So it's closer to the forty number, which is a really good deal in specs. But also the next one, Lindsay told me that I was wrong. So I may be wrong, but I budgeted over a hundred thousand for the tandem dump truck. And she said that ain't gonna happen at that price.
That would be a used.
Yeah, sort of.
I'd like to laugh at that if you saw. It'll be like the yellow one, but it'll be blue.
This is an opportunity for y'all to to continue to think about it by the July the eighth meeting. Tell me how ridiculous I am on on some of these things. So that's a that's for a good laugh. The the water treatment rehab clear wells, that's that plus some security features at the plant. Once again, if there's some things that we can offset with some GFO monies, then that's what we'll do. So part of what we wanted to do was make sure y'all are aware that these are the items that y'all had included in the operating budget. So we just wanted to move those over to the capital. Same way with the upgrading of the Henderson Mountain pump station, keeping that in there. So once again, I prefaced it with my numbers are wrong, but that's why I deal with Word document and not Excel. So that really don't confuse matters. Thank you, sir. Any questions on the way hit the general fund capital fund where the chiefs have have just been so overwhelmingly supportive of. I think that's why they set the queen right here. Chief Chiefs already written some notes. So in regards to the general fund, once again, we'll sit at the top of what I will be proposing. If you all see fit in the July eighth meeting is to take some of the surplus monies from the 2023 and allow that to fund to create this general fund capital fund. We do have some mandatory improvements, not even need, I mean, it is needed, but it's pretty much mandatory that we do improvements to to City Hall to be in compliance with some some things USDA ADA standards. So that has to be done. And right now, I don't think we had allocated any monies in this fiscal year budget significant enough to do those. So I would strongly encourage us to consider at a minimum creating the capital fund just to help with with some of that. You'll see this is where we extracted out of the department through development department's vehicle. And then the the plotter. That is going to be beneficial to the entire city. So that's why I didn't say the possessiveness of it. It will most likely house in area space or space that can accommodate, but it will benefit all departments. So that's why I feel strongly about that. So you'll see that it would carry a balance of nearly four hundred thousand even after those monies are expensed out. And you may wonder why I've put in some public safety items that had otherwise been put into the 2020s plus. And I think that I've made reference that when we had gotten the direction at the the last meeting of moving forward with our due diligence of presenting you all the mint budget to accommodate a second fire station in 2015, we kind of looked at a twenty-four month cycle from June of twenty-four to June of twenty-six in terms of our monthly allocation. So there's a spreadsheet that you may or may not be able to read. And I do want to kind of speak in concert with that because it would make a little more sense. Because when you approve the 2020 budget or the 2024 budget, you approved the squash expenditures from 2024. You did twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-one. You identified projects that had been, I guess, discussion, concern, voter approved. And this is what we want to do. So with the public safety aspect, there were items relative to UTV, portable radio, software, laptop, turnout gear, SCBA's bill station, SCBA replacement, thermal imaging. So those were already allocated in your 2024 budget for use of squash monies. So you will carry enough money in 2024 to do all of those items. What we wanted to do is pull out the projects that we know that were major importance, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And we are getting very close to the end. So that's why you said twenty-four months because we're going to carry hopefully about eighty-five thousand a month in collection. And we extrapolate that out of what our current balance is all the way to the very end. You've got about a hundred sixty left to do on the bathrooms. And that's facade improvements and some other things. And and part of it is that will still have you about four hundred thousand dollars less than than maybe what had been previously discussed. So that's a good thing. I want to remind you all that when you see a continued amount, even though they're delivered, there's the needed facade and some other improvements. So I'm carrying a balance for that and covering that money so we finish that. Then the further part, Ms. Goldner had, I think we're getting close to starting the opportunity to do some drawdowns.
Yes, so we submitted our request for release of funding today. We had to do a public comment period on our environmental assessment. That period was up as of Monday. So that request has gone in to DCA for their review. They also have a roughly fifteen day public comment period that they will post as well. And so that takes us into middle of July. I would anticipate by the end of July, we should be getting our request approved and the authorization to go ahead and proceed with the design. You know, as I had told you all earlier in the year and and when we got the grant last year, we wanted to make sure that we were not spending money before we were engaging in activities that we actually could use towards our matching portion. And so that is why staff has done much of the environmental work that led us up to this point with the help of regional commission because we wanted to make sure that we were making every penny count. If we're spending money on this project, it needs to be approved to where we may be reimbursed for it.
And so just to put another, I guess, sales point for the plotter, I can make this bigger than eleven seven time. So we can see it. Well, I can't see it, so that's why I had to pull up my laptop. Apologize. But basically what the picture is, is if we just look at 2024 and we do all that we needed to do, then by the time we get to the end with road, fire station, et cetera, we will start dipping into the red. So what I wanted to propose, going back to the general fund capital improvement project, is extract some of these items from the squash, put it into the capital fund. These one-time costs that will be needed. And then that way it will help to free up. But I think the second spreadsheet will then show you how it can cash flow through the duration of the cycle. But if you just remove some of the items that's on your your sheet, and this is where all that chief talked about some of the errors are made. Well, we got the chief here. Yeah, you've heard that you've already found it, you know, follows.
Yeah, well, there's a couple items on here that we've already purchased and paid for. So we wouldn't miss one of that capital we get to those. And the fire department items for which was lost laptops already been purchased. The turnout year is not forty-seven thousand dollars, it's twenty-nine and five. We already purchased some of that. Now, on the other hand, the SCBA bill station, we have thirty budgets in, but due to price increases over the last year since we did the place. Like Steve Major said, in July of twenty-three, it's now the thirty-three nine. We've already purchased the face pieces of the SCBA replacement program. So instead of forty-five, that's under forty thousand. And then had not taken the action on the radio system, the thermal imaging cameras. And the ten thousand dollars is the remaining life package that we have not paid for because it hasn't come in yet for Assistant Chief Norton's truck. That takes our total from two twenty-six down to two or three nine.
So Chief Dawkins wants to try to beat that down if he can. I think your items are pretty well the 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 same, and so.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have the UTV we haven't purchased and not spoken city manager on this. And I know we talked about needing a UTV. I know we do, but it's something I can see we can move to twenty twenty-five very easily. But one, if it's coming to the police department, I have no place to put it. And I'm not going to let it sit out in the weather. Can it sit down here? That's great, but it does me no good if I have to drive far to get it. So that's kind of how I look at it. And then the portable radios, we have ordered them. I think always for us, I don't know about you, but
On a second.
We budgeted twenty thousand with the portables. We come in at ten six, something like that. So there's a savings there. But our mobiles, things was put in the price, when we do the mobiles, they were put in the price of the person's cars. So that kind of weighs out. That's in that two eighty, that's what we have for the vehicles. So we're looking at the portables, it's ten six, we budgeted twenty. Come in way under than what I thought was going to be. What we looked at and then we come across this. Software, we're already started with that project.
The money has not been expensed out, so.
Twenty-eight thousand, right?
We still need to carry over some.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think, yeah, I think we want to put forty-eight thousand out for that. And that was just because we've signed it and started. The working problems.
Chief just want to try to show he's saved more than chief share, but not so fast on that one.
I can't do that. One thing that we could push is it's a needed project, but we could push it in two twenty-five is our radio system, which was fifty thousand dollars budgeted. And the reason I say that is if we start today, the likelihood of us finishing that this year is slim. It would probably could be close. So we should potentially spread that out in twenty-five. Right now, we're operating on Pickett Sky Fire's channel. We don't have our own, and that was budgeted to set up our own frequency. But we had no intention of using that as our primary. We're going to use that as a backup also our tactical channel. Currently, we got a destruction fire fire scene, we need that channel, we swap over to one, but it's not a monitor channel. In other words, it's not monitored via nine and one. So if something goes on, you have to monitor two different radio frequencies. That can be difficult for me. That's kind of a safety risk due to having to monitor both and not having a dispatcher monitoring operations that are having on that instance. That is an option.
And so I'll tell you all that my position, the reason I wanted to show all these items reflected on the the general fund capital improvement is I do think that these are more needs than wants. And so I do respect their their deference to the end of this year. But I do think that being able to utilize some surplus monies from last fiscal year would be a wise thing to do. Because I do think that if you look at the next twenty-four months in squash, we continue to collect a pretty consistent amount. We will be able to cash flow in the positive with a buffer. There's always going to be things that come up. So one of the reasons why I don't like to say, well, yeah, let's just let's just get through this year. We'll see how next year go, we're going to start on this and all that. I'd rather present you all, the team, a spreadsheet that shows that if we start drawing down equal payments of seventy-five thousand a month for the next however many months on the road, we would have the cash flow necessary to do it without any interruptions. Same way with the the fire station. We would continue to be able to cash flow that without any interruptions. We've got about eleven more months of of set aside monies of the new engine. Then at that point, on delivery, I believe next fall, it will be paid in full. And we've also put in here additional monies to help outfit it as well. So I think y'all continue to be good stewards of of this perpetual fund. But before we got too far into this calendar year in preparation of twenty twenty-five, I did want to give you all the information of saying, hey, finishing up the bathrooms within the next month or so, beginning with the road, doing what y'all been doing on the set side of the engine, moving forward with taking the direction of the fire station. This, I think, is how it could be done. And I do think that it would result in us finishing out the next twenty-four months doing these projects that we all had set out to do in response to the referendum. The the only caveat is we have expensed out monies in the past at City Park. But you'll see on here that we've only allocated for the rest of this year that we could conceivably afford to do based on cash flow will be about fifty thousand dollars. And I think after the town hall. And I think after the town hall, one of the reasons why I was interested in diving into this was I did not want to create unreal expectations about some of the things that maybe GMC had articulated could be done. I wanted to say, these are the things that have already been set in motion, so to speak. So give y'all a picture of what could cash flow. So the bridge kind of done, no charge. GMC is going to get us kind of a list of Kimbley Horn. I said GMC, Kimbley. That was my third day on the job, so please forgive me on that one, sorry. I know Mr. Lenny will give me grace on that one, so thank you, sir. But, but Kimbley Horn, thank you. I think they're going to give us kind of a breakdown of some items that we could possibly do from a financial perspective. But I did want to just disclose to you all that one of the reasons I've been hesitant to, to speak about some things is it, it does look like we'd be able to complete out all that we set out to do, maybe just not to the scale of the finale. So any, any questions on those? We're only going to read them pretty good. We'll have the plotter next time.
Don't, don't lose the fact that we'll be taking possession of a new fire cut next fall.
Yes, sir.
That is going to be paid for. That's pretty tremendous. Something we set to do how many months ago? Twenty-four?
Many months.
Many months. If we were successful, I am. That's, that's important.
Anything further, City Mayor?
Well, I do, I do want to kind of dive back into the necessary budget amounts of scheduled fees we will be presenting to you all. And kind of conceptually, I forgot Lindsay gave you these. I probably would have just started talking without Mr. You live it out.
It's a bit more money, can you imagine?
Yeah, we can. I just need to build it. I don't need the fence right now.
And look, part of this is, is for you all to, to think about and as we kind of get closer to the July eighth meeting and then during the July eighth meeting, there are things that have, have new information or thoughts, ideas, we're not conversed with during the year. I will tell you, I feel very strongly that if we have a way to do these things, then it may be important to do. Same way with the, the rate structure. Part of the, the top page is something that, once again, full disclosure is not completely accurate to the point of this was Brandon working on a spreadsheet. And so Lindsay said I was off, but just to let you know, the, the top page is dealing with residential inside and outside. I think that most of y'all are familiar with the fact that we have nearly six thousand workers. So when you think about that, I want you to just digest that for a minute, that we have less than five thousand people in our city. But if you take two point two, two point five, whatever multiplier of households, you multiply that by six thousand, that's how many people that we serve. So I, I don't want that to go unnoticed. And so part of what we have looked at is for years, we've been operating under a base rate, base fee, and then just a single rate. And at times, I think there's been the, the talk of, hey, we need to do what any other utility does and structure it in a format that's consumption based. So you'll see that we are now looking at in the schedule of fees in the amended budget, having a, a base rate continue. That's based for water and sewer. And you'll see that the, my recommendation would be to look at increasing that base rate, pretty significant. Because it's been quite some time. And based upon the rate study that we were required to do for our improvements, we have to make sure that we can service the debt upon doing these improvements that was needed to our system. That's just the reality. And so you'll see, I think, forty-five dollars as the base rate, water. And I believe sewer, twenty, and that's at the outside. And inside, I didn't have one of those, I didn't memorize. Sorry, but looking at thirty and fifteen. So that would be the, the, if you recall, the meter is, I believe the new meters are about five and some change. And we've not been collecting the money, but we've been paying for it. And so I think at a minimum, we have to recoup the costs, our true cost of that. So the residential inside of ten dollars is the change. And it may change because I do believe that the rate study had recommended higher. And pretty significant. And I think that what I wanted to do is purchase the, the subject today that y'all are aware of the improvements we have underway in some of the debt. So we do need to move all these, these rates. I think that the good and fortunate part of our new software does enable us to tier this out. So from the consumption standpoint, zero to two thousand gallons, two thousand and one to five thousand, and then five thousand and one to ten thousand, and then over ten thousand. And just from a practical perspective, I know that as a, a user of, with a family, I'm going to be in that five to ten thousand, always. I have for fifteen years and several different water jurisdictions that I've been in know that I'm going to be in that five to ten thousand. Maybe a single person or a person that, you know, doesn't use a whole lot of water is going to be in that two thousand and less. So the rate increase being proposed for that first tier would in effect be thirty cent for inside residential water at the two thousand gallons or less, and forty cent for sewer. So that's where I think it's reasonable to suggest that the base rate does need to increase because of the, the base charges we have, so is debt. But in terms of the actual consumption, it would be tiered that as you got closer to that seven, eight, nine thousand gallons inside residential water, it would go up a dollar ninety-eight, two dollars roughly per thousand. And so going back to the, the water conservation, this is not an effort to, to, to make people. But water is a resource, a very valuable vital resource, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us to be good stewards. And I think because we do have some opportunities to conserve that these percentages will reflect people's efforts of saying, okay, how do I get to that lower tier? The educational components of some information. Our own efforts of producing higher leaks in time, helping our loss ratio. So those are kind of what I wanted to bring to your attention. I think Lindsay had also given you a, a way better description than mine that looks way more complicated that I probably can't even communicate other than. She did break down kind of a user of two, five, seven, twelve thousand with kind of the recommendations that I had proposed. And I think also the recommended, recommended rates by the consultant. So just for conversational purposes, you heard me say forty-five, the consultant says forty-nine.
So council, this is not a new topic to us. We knew going under USDA funding, the opportunity would present itself at the correct time to do the rate study. That's been completed, as Mr. Douglas mentioned. This has been reworked by staff multiple times to make sure that our constituents are getting the best service at the best price possible while we're covering our best service and providing services to them. So I commend staff for coming in lower than what the suggested rate study was by the professional consultant that we engaged.
So when did that?
And we need to understand that we also purchased water. And the cost of that purchased water has increased twice. And we, we have not raised grades to recognize that increased cost.
Yes. So these are working documents that I would just ask that you take today in your thoughts and then forget them. And then on July the eighth, when we need to talk about budget amendments, it's pretty well going to be close to it. But I just don't want us to marry to the idea of, of numbers. Because I want to get y'all the best and most accurate information because we will springboard into August of our twenty twenty-five budget. And I think that if we were to take the approach of let's go ahead and amend the budget and just reflect what we need for the remainder of this fiscal year and anticipation of twenty twenty-five, instead of having to revisit in January of next year, we could conceivably look at just one time for now and then revisit in twenty-six. But that's something that, you know, just want y'all to spawn some feedback and we'll kind of give y'all some options leading up to the eighth about what that would look like.
Thanks, sir. Anything further on that item?
Y'all have any questions for Andrew, Chiefs, Mayor, Kim, Lindsay?
All right. Next item on the agenda is the executive session, council, for the purpose of real estate, legal aid, personnel. Go for a motion.
Motion, we can go into executive session. Second.
Key discussion, call in favor. Oppose, same. Thank you, council.